Meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order for January 27, 2020. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Okay, we're going to open the meeting as we always do with public comment, so I would ask if you have some comments to come up to the podium here. There's a sign-in sheet at the podium. Please sign your name and your address, and then feel free to state your comments. But just so you know.
Yes?
Just so you know, we will be having comment during the hearing as well.
Oh, okay.
If you're here to speak, I know you live in the impacted area. If you're here to speak about the National Grid hearing.
No, I was, I would, I was going to use part of my time for that, but basically I wanted to talk.
Okay, if you could just state your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Karen Laurel, and I live at 591 Mass Ave, which I'm trying to write down here real quick. And I'm talking here about the code of conduct, and I reviewed it, and the guidelines were very interesting. They talked about, you know, beyond the gifts issue. When I worked for the government, it was strictly $10. You don't accept anything that's worth over $10. So you got coffee and donuts at a meeting, an offsite meeting, but lunch and dinner, you had to pay, even if you paid them for the sandwiches, they were delivering at the meeting. So it was really simple, a one-sentence thing, and the mass laws already say that you're supposed to, everybody here should be reviewing and signing off on, you know, ethics laws every year. So I think what was put very specific to North Andover was well-covered in what you're supposed to sign every year. But I think the guidelines in that document, when it was talking about risk assessment, controlling projects, monitoring, could be extremely beneficial. There are a number of high-visibility projects that are happening now, and if we applied those, we could develop our own best practices and write, you know, further the implementation. Because the implementation right now is almost the minimum you could do and still claim you're doing something according to the guidelines, because it only focuses on gifts. So, which should be a one-sentence thing instead of a four or five-page thing. So I'm proposing, you know, potentially the Avalon complex as a project where these things could be applied and develop a meaningful implementation for North Andover using the guidelines. Or the Mass Ave 125 project is another one where already laws are being broken, policy is not being followed, and everything else. So using these guidelines on how to better manage projects would be highly beneficial, and we could come up with some good implementations. That's my comment, and then I will comment later about the polls.
Any other public comment this evening before we enter into the hearing?
So I think I'm going to use my chairman's prerogative to move the governmental reports before the public hearing, and because we only have one under there, and it's something that we always enjoy, is meeting new folks that are coming to town. So I'm going to take out of order and do introduction of Historical Society Executive Director Brian Howard.
Thank you, Chairman Valencourt. I know Mr. Howard would have loved to have sit to a discussion of moving polls, but I'm sure he'll get one next time. My name is Stan Limpert. I live at 43 Stone Cleve Road. I'm the president of the North Andover Historical Society, and Chair Valencourt graciously provided this opportunity for me to come introduce our new executive director, Brian Howard. As you know, Carol Majahad has been our director at the Historical Society for over 31 years, and has moved into a new role as head of our education activity for the society. She'll be continuing in that role and continuing to provide a lot of the same programs she has over a number of years at our public schools and other places, so she's going to continue on that role. The executive director role, though, is being taken by Mr. Howard here, who joins us from the Oneida County Historical Center in Utica, New York, where he was for 12 years, and had a very successful experience there and grew that organization too. So we hope to have some of those same benefits with him as our executive director. We have a lot, as you know, that's on our plate too, a lot of exciting things that we're looking forward to, not the least of which is refurbishment of our Rogers Building. So Brian, do you want to say a few things to the board here?
Good evening. Well, it's a real honor and a privilege to come to this community. It'll be three weeks tomorrow that I started at the Historical Society, and I'm bringing 25 years of experience in museum and historical society work to the table, and I was really interested in getting involved in this project. It's something that I've been intrigued by from afar. I've learned a lot about the Historical Society. I'm well-familiar with what organizations like ours do and can do in the communities that they serve. And my main interest is in making sure that this organization, which has been around since 1913, continues to impact the community in a positive manner, and that we extend our reach beyond the borders of the town, and really set a standard for what organizations like ours can do. So I appreciate the investment that the Historical Society is making in me, and the confidence that the town has shown in providing me this opportunity. Thank you.
Well said, and welcome to the board. Thank you very much for being here.
A little bit of a difference between Utica, New York, and here.
Well, Utica's built its economy on the textile industry in the 19th century, so there's a lot of crossover between where I'm coming from and where I'm coming to. So I'm really looking forward to it. Pardon?
When was Utica founded?
1798.
Okay.
And so there's about another 100 years of history in this region to cover.
Almost 150.
But the story of the economic development and the municipal development is very, very similar, so.
Welcome to North Andover. Leave that Utica weather where it belongs.
Yeah, no like effect snow out here. Thank you.
And we look forward to seeing you at all the events that we have around town, and, you know, I'm sure you'll enjoy those as we all do, so we'll look forward to seeing you there.
Great. Thanks again.
Thank you and welcome.
You have front seat to one of the most favorite and cherished spots in the entire town.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move to a public hearing from National Grid, New England poll, joint poll petition on the Mass Ave Chickering Road, and we had to continue this from January 13th. So I'll hear a motion to move into the public hearing.
Move to continue with the public hearing in accordance with General Act Chapter 166, Section 22, to receive comments regarding a joint poll petition from National Grid in Horizon, New England, to install one new poll and relocate 10 others on Massachusetts Avenue, Chickering Road.
Motion and a second.
Second, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, well now we're in a public hearing. Yes, sir.
Good evening, David, your senior designer at National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street here in North Andover. I passed you something just now. Today I made that at the last minute. Earlier this week, our designer came up with a, what was the first thing on the four bullets that I left with two weeks ago, the sketch being changed. What you'll see there in green is the only thing we're asking from the town, six pole relocations, and there's, I think, two or three that are poles that are just going to be changed in place. And the red is all Mastio T. Right-of-Way area that we are getting the rights from, from the state. So that might clarify a little bit of what we're doing. It's only six poles that we're asking to be relocated more than three feet. The paperwork says 10 and two, if you add the two numbers up between the state and the town, you come up with the paperwork that you see on the cover that we sent to you. Hopefully that'll clarify everything you need on that. The other two points that we had, if you have any questions, I could answer on that, but I'll move on to the other three points that we had.
I have one question.
Go ahead, yep.
The green circle extends all the way down here encompassing these three other poles. What's the purpose of you circling those three other poles? So I count six here, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Six, yeah, and then you see the solid filled-in ones?
Yeah.
Those are being replaced in the same spot. Right under that pink that I highlighted, I just threw this together the best I could this afternoon. I'm sorry, it's not exactly professional. It's a markup of what some other designer did, so it could clarify for you.
Okay, so those are going to be replaced in place?
In place, they're less than three feet from where, yeah, they exist right now. So that is something we don't need to petition for, so.
The ones that I remember asking you and the other gentleman to give special priority and interest to were the ones that just seemed they were in such an awful spot.
Yeah, that's.
My points, that was my first one.
Are you the best?
Yes, I am.
Okay, there you go.
The most tedious, and it's going to be.
Three or four requests from the petition.
Number two and three go together on the, on the, the one side of Chickering Road on Mass Ave, there's a, the customer was here, she asked about the new pole that's being placed and whether or not she would get a service from it. She can't. And she was okay with that. She thought that her service was going to go there, and that wasn't a problem with her. She had a problem with her existing service going through the tree. So what I did is I asked the arborist to go out there and trim it. So that's going to take care of the existing service, it's not moving to the new pole. The new pole is there to support the line that we're building across the street. Everything's moving around a little bit, and we need support. And that new pole will land in the public way. It'll be covered, as shown on there, by the states. We're not asking anything from you, but the anchor is going to land on the private property, and they have, the easementism works for that to happen. Their concern was mowing the lawn around the guy wire that was coming down. Now, if we have the guy wire that's going like this, it's a lot harder to get under it and around it to mow. What we decided to do and asked, and they were happy we were able to do, is put a guy wire that goes straight up and down. It's called a sidewalk fixture that comes straight down. It's the best we could do. The two customers were there, the lady and gentleman, and they were very happy when I left. And one of the gentlemen is here, excuse me, was here last week, and he was there with me, and everyone was happy there. So that's the second and third points that I left with. Finally, we have the existing one on the corner of Autran Avenue, I believe it is, yeah, the side street. Well, right now, we have, for that particular customer, Karen, I spoke with her at length today about it, and explained to her what I'm going to tell you right now. The pole is kind of a burden there right now in front of our house. It exists. We're going to move it, we were asking to move it to four feet two weeks ago, and in doing so, it created an issue for her. And what we did is we went and met, the two engineers went out and met her and discussed alternative ways to serve it. They came back to the office. Upon further review, there's a number of things that happened that we discovered that we can't resolve with the ways that they came up with. First and foremost is the fact that the other utilities, we can drop our electric wire if we did move it to the other side of the property instead of where we're asking. The other utilities don't have a way to come into the house. There's no pole to come from, to drop from. And that's something that they would have to figure out whether they're going to go to another part of the house or not, and whether they can do it or not if we didn't do it the way we initially asked. Secondly, if we did move the pole to two different spots, one at the other end of our property, one across the street, physically it can be done, but now we're creating different angles. Anchors will have to land on private property, and easements will be needed to attain. We want to keep everything in the public way, and that's the way it was done initially. And that's why we determined that the original plan is the best way to go, and it's the least impact, the least change. And it's not putting burden on the neighbor on the other side of our house, or the neighbor across the street to have, now have a pole in front of their property that wasn't there previously. Unfortunately, she has that pole in front of her property, and right now it's hidden, it's hidden nicely by a tree. The new spot would, it would bring it right out into the open, I guess, so, but it's only four feet. We're under pressure from the state to move it, and that's the burden that we have. So the pole needs to go away, we need to find a good spot for it, and this, in all essence accord, at least in our opinion, is the best place to go.
Is it four feet further away from the property? I mean, I'm looking at this diagram, and it looks like, is the circle, the open circle the new position, or is it the filled-in circle the new position?
I need all my copies.
Is that going in the first mark?
There it is.
So it's going.
It's more parallel with Autran. Yeah.
From the one I'm looking at, is it the open circle the new location, or is it the closed circle?
It's the closed.
The closed circle is the new location.
Relocation spot is the one with like half-black, half-white. It's like checkered.
The two circles are not accurate.
No, they're not. But the four feet is the accuracy. It would move along the right-of-way towards Autran more than what you're seeing, and that anchor is actually going to go in the same direction as Mass Ave is, which is like that, if I'm looking at it. And it's not going to land in the property as it's showing there, too. Apologize for that. That shouldn't be like that. I have a.
So the pole in the angle would not be on private property, it'd all be in the right-of-way?
Yes, we're able to do it that way.
No, I understand that.
It's like a danger which.
So Ms. Laurel, we will definitely have an opportunity to speak. You'll definitely have an opportunity to speak.
So you said that for whatever reason, you could not move it across this, can you clarify, I guess, why you couldn't move it across the street? Like, does it have to be on that side of Mass Ave?
The, across Autran.
No, across Mass Ave.
What we're doing is we're feeding wires from Mass Ave down Autran.
Over to Autran, okay.
This is the first pole on that side of the road.
Right.
Feeds into Autran, so we're either, we're going to, you can put it on the side it's on, or the other side of Autran.
Or you could put it on 579 slot.
Yeah. And if we put it on that opposite side, now we have a problem with reservicing the house with anchoring and guying on wherever the new location is into private property. There's not much space there to do it.
Why would you have trouble servicing 591 Mass Ave if the pole is in 579? We don't, wires go across the street?
They can cross the street, they just don't have the angle to go in there. Where it was discussed to place it, further down the road.
I mean, could her intake move to the other side of her house, for example, or something? I don't know where the intake is on her house for the utilities, but.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
You're saying the angle isn't right to get the utilities into the home on 559, but could we relocate the place where it goes into the home on 559? I mean, it's on the corner of a house usually, so could move to the other corner or something? I mean, did you guys get into that level of investigation, I guess I'm wondering? Because if you look at the.
I wasn't there. I don't know if they spoke on that.
If you.
I can't say that, you did?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what if, so across the street is a church, so it's not a residence, and so is that, would that be too much of a run if it was located across the street, near the church park, near the church?
That's my first question.
It was, yeah. The church driveway? So across the street is a church, not a private residence.
Mass Ave, across Mass Ave.
Across, yeah, yeah. And one of the churches.
There already is a pole, it feeds directly from across from a pole on that side.
Yeah, I think it's going from there to there. But if you look at 579, I mean, one of the reasons that you had mentioned was you'd be putting a pole in a yard where there wasn't a pole. But that yard is quite large, and there's a nice tree there, and there's a space. I mean, I'm sure that person is not at the public hearing because there wasn't a potential at a pole in their yard, so that would be a discussion as well, but.
But we're creating an angle there, and at the second pole in town Autran. Now you still need an anchor over there, too, because it's creating another, you're zigzagging down the road, so.
And why, again, does this pole need to be moved at all?
The state is placing a new sidewalk in their project.
Occasionally, there's a sidewalk going, wrapping around the pole. I mean, I know that's obviously not ideal, but you do see it sometimes where there's a pole sticking up in the middle of the sidewalk.
Fortunately, that's a safety issue.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, so did you investigate putting it further down Mass Ave towards the intersection? Like, instead of, is that, was that considered? Is that possible?
We're trying to run wire.
That's what you had mentioned last time.
You have a house there, there's no way you can put it close to that.
We're trying to run wire down Autran from across Mass Ave. Putting a pole down Mass Ave, that, like, towards Chickering is not helping us.
You know, in some neighborhoods, and we're not too far from there, there are some poles that are behind the property. What about going behind and bringing it, the lines forward?
Behind the property?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the library area, there's poles that are in the back of people's yards, and then they're brought forward because some of us have poles in the front of our yards. It's all in the same neighborhood.
Right.
So the lot that, where you, they took the house, is there any way you can go back and then bring it forward so it's not in front of?
So that way the wires cross over Ms. Laurel's backyard to hit the connecting pole farther down Autran, as opposed to going in front of her house?
Normally, we don't run our lines over private property like that unless we're going to service the property. That, I mean, there's a million ways we can do things. I, we're talking about easements, access to get back there if something happens. That's why we keep everything in the public way, so.
I understand, but this is somewhat, you know, in the, I don't want to say something that the homeowner might not agree with, but this is an extraordinary situation. I mean, her house is right smack practically on the street. No one in this room would be happy with that situation. Then you compound it with putting a pole in front of it. I would be, not you personally, I would be out of my mind at the destruction, the destruction to her property. So I think we need to get a little more creative.
Right, so, yeah, I think we're trying to engineer here, we're not engineers in this forum.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of us are engineers, but not doing this. So, you know, is there a way we can go back, shop on our pencils a little bit, and bring it back to the designers and say, we need a better solution than to plop it, you know, again, right in front of the homeowners?
Better.
And here comes, I know this gentleman here is.
By better. What's wrong?
We don't want a pole in front of our house. I think that's, is it possible to develop a solution where the pole isn't in front of our house that way?
If I may, I'm Scott Kellaway, and I spoke before you last week. The planning provided is the N Grid engineering plan. I've got a plan here that has a little bit more information, it provides a much clearer picture. The blue locations are the existing pole locations, the red are where they're moving to, and I made a copy.
Thank you.
This has the features of that particular intersection. When we were here two weeks ago.
Thank you.
It was, I stated that we view any possible location in three conditions. It had to meet the engineering requirements for all of the infrastructure that's going to be on those utility poles, Comcast, phone, electric, what have you. It also had to be able to be a viable location with all of the infrastructure within the existing public right-of-way. And that was my commitment to this board, that we'd view any alternative location. There have been a couple that have viewed, and we still come back, we also had to meet the project requirements that it had to allow us to build an ADA-compliant sidewalk and wheelchair ramp. That particular location is wheelchair ramp going there. I know that there are poles and sidewalks sometimes, they can still sometimes be worked around to meet ADA requirements, but not in a wheelchair ramp, so. Anyway, we viewed all alternatives. Across the street, we're widening that corner already, and the property you're looking at there is going to be part of the roadway apex. So across the street doesn't, doesn't work. We looked at further down on the other side of the driveway. Unfortunately, that would require a guy wire on public land, on private property, again, not within the public right-of-way. not within the public right of way. And electricity could be provided to the house, but not the other utilities. Cable and telephone would not be able to be provided there. So what we have here is what we have after exhausting research, the most viable location for that pole.
Autran. So that's, it's not moving deeper into her property, but-
She's, has her hand up, Dickie.
Yeah, we're gonna take public comment, I mean, okay, any other questions at this point? Okay, Karen, we're gonna take some public comment now and anyone who has to, would like to speak for or against this?
I'm Karen Laurel again. I'm at 591 and Rosemary is, is very right that I'm pretty livid about everything that's happening to my house, having construction nearly three years, four feet away from one side of my house, eight feet from another side of my house, and roughly 20 from the other. Significantly decreasing the value of my house, but not being reimbursed for it. So, um, as I explained to Dave today and- Okay, I'm sorry. What I explained to Dave today was that three of his colleagues came out last week, I think it was, yeah, it was last week, and we discussed different things. And I, I do happen to have a PhD in engineering, and so we got into some discussions and one of their engineers was very creative and he was very analytical. And he looked at different ways that you could splice in, I mean, carry it in, um, you know, with, um, and so the first recommendation was at 579. And that doesn't put it in the front of the house, it's more towards the side of the house. Because of the, if, if it's right beyond the driveway, okay, the front of the house pretty much ends at their driveway. And that's all town property and that's not being taken away for the new island that's going there. The second choice was at the junction of 591 Mass Ave, my property, and 12 Autran, there's a fence there. And already on one side is a, is a pole. And placing the other pole there, maybe getting rid of the one that's on the opposite side of 12. And I did talk to him and he was willing to talk about this, the new owner of 12 Autran. So I talked to him this evening. So what I was upset about Dave today was when I discussed these different options, at the time I spoke to him, I spoke roughly late afternoon, but not quite at closing time. So he was gonna talk to Mass Ave, um, Mass Dot before four o'clock and then get back to me. And so at that time, he had said, they didn't really investigate the other options that were put on the table. And I said, well, then in two weeks, you basically did nothing. And I was pretty angry about that because they appeared to be extremely viable options with knowledgeable engineers, one of them being the design engineer on this project. And then he said, they, they hadn't investigated him. And then he said, but I'll talk to Mass Dot. And then all of a sudden, because he said, well, we could potentially postpone it for another couple of weeks and actually do the investigation. And then all of a sudden, come to the meeting and find out, no, he's back to saying, we're gonna do what's easiest for Mass Dot. And I, I really objected to that.
Clear. Today was the first time anybody spoke to you?
No, last week, the three engineers came.
Last week was the first time? Okay.
Yes, yes, it was, yeah.
Was it the first time I spoke to you on this at all? About moving that pole? Was last week?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, can, can I just clarify what you said? I, I pulled up Google satellite picture, so I just wanna make sure I understand what you're referring to. So you discussed with them moving in front of the, the pole that's in front of 12 Autran. It's currently to the right of their driveway, it looks like? Would that stay there in your, in the, just, in the discussion you have with them?
They looked at different options.
Okay.
Okay, that was one of the options. One was having a single one at the fence line.
Right, okay.
Okay?
Like a good option if it would technically work.
And, and he was saying that what would, they would do is they would swing from that pole at the fence line all the way across to in front of the church. And then there'd be a pole at the right location. So there's a kind of a, a forking that they do that could bring it over to my house. And that's what he, he showed me an instance of the, the forking mechanism, not off of a pole, but midline kind of fork to drop the line to me. And that's what he was suggesting. And the project engineer was agreeable to that. And then I talked to Dave and he said, no, they didn't, he didn't investigate it. Or he felt that that, you know, that the simplest way is the best way. And I said, well, that's gonna further decrease the value of my home because it calls attention to the fact that the road is so close to my house. So by having it passing by multiple windows, because it comes in at an angle, okay? If it was running parallel, kinda like what this was showing, um, it wouldn't be, it would be, currently, it's wrapped with trees, but it is off to the side of my house, not directly in front of it. Now, because of the angle, it's gonna be further in front of my house, past one window and probably in the middle of a second window. And, and really broadcast the fact that, that the street is almost running through my house. And I said that would decrease, further decreases. The project is already significantly decreasing the value of my house without any reimbursement. And this would further call attention to the fact that the street's heavy trucks are gonna be running through my house.
Um, so I, I guess I'd ask either Scott or, or tell me from National Grid to come back and maybe talk about that. So was that given some thought, that the potential to move that pole between 12 and 591 Mass Ave and removing the pole that's currently at 12 Autran? Was that, was that a viable or was that option discussed and was that something that might be viable?
Yeah, that was discussed with the engineers, Karen.
At the job site? They brought it back and, and in the review of everything involved, the, the original plan doesn't have two factors, an anchor landing on private property that we need an easement for and, um, no way to service the telephone and cable from the new pole position. If those things can be resolved, that's not usually easy. Anything can be done. And, and, and given the time of two weeks, very little time to, to change something like that, to get a solid, a, a signature for an easement presented to you.
Certainly not.
I, I did my best in the last two weeks and I, I, I'm kinda like the guy between the engineer, the DOT and Karen.
Yeah, we understand. Yeah, you get it. We understand.
Nobody here in this room is deliberately trying to cause-
Oh, no, I want everybody to be happy too.
-pain and hardship on, on Karen.
Yeah.
We get, we get that, but-
So, I mean, there is not, you know, we're not looking at a deadline. We weren't, we would've been happy to push this out another two weeks if it gave us a better solution. So we'll certainly be willing to do that. I know there's work that needs to be done by the state and there's deadlines that they're looking to be, to make as well. But it would be nice to know, or, and if we've exhausted all options that could potentially provide some release, relief to a homeowner who's already been greatly burdened by this project. So I think, you know, as town officials, that has to be our focus. So, and I think Scott's gonna come back up and-
I just, I just wanna say, I was not party to the discussions between Mass Electric and the discussions with Dr. Delaro. I wish I were. We, we've looked at this extensively and I can honestly tell you that we've not arrived at an alternative that works, either engineering wise or given the public right of way. This is the most viable location. It moves a pole back from its existing position four feet. It actually moves it four inches closer to the corner of the house of that corner. It's, it's not moving it four feet in front of, towards her house. This is the most viable location. It's the only real location we have. If we can come up with another one, we'll be happy to move it there. But this is the only viable location.
But, but you're speaking from the perspective of the state and Mass DOT, correct? So there's also engineers at National Grid and, and New England Tele, uh, New England Telephone-
I understand.
And Verizon, that can also look at the, and say how they might have the capability of running the wires. I understand your perspective, it's pole location, but they have the ability to look at the wires and say, you know, are there other technology that they can use to run the wires to the house and get it to, you know? And if an easement, if it's an easement, right?
But, I mean, again, my commitment was to stay within the public right of way. And that was the promise I made you all. And, yeah, I, I've looked at it, I've been involved with a lot of utility relocation. I'm a bridge engineer and a civil engineer, but I've moved a lot of poles. And this is the best location we have for that pole.
So I, I got some questions, Chris. What's the difference, you know? Is the difference between, you know, Larry Bird and a high school basketball player? Is it between Larry Bird and Michael Jordan? In other words, how, how different is the best to the next best? I think that's part of the, I think that's part of the question here, which is, you're focused on the optimal, I get it. But what's a degree of degradation? What's the, what's the real trade-off with finding the alternative?
I cannot find an alternative that is even viable, engineering wise, right of way wise, and meets the project requirements of getting an ADA compliant wheelchair. I've not found an alternative.
But what about, sorry, just the right of way wise? Why is that necessarily a requirement? I mean, we just talked about Ms. Seawade's, the guide wires in her lawn.
Yeah, we, we've secured the easements that are required for this project and I don't know exactly how long that process takes or whether it's even possible, but again, we, we would prefer to keep it within the public right of way rather than approaching upon more private property.
And you can't put the guide wire, sorry, parallel to Autran, so it's still in the right of way? Like, if you-
It has to, it, it's, I think it's guided across-
It has to go backwards to your-
In the direction of Mass Ave.
What about, um, garbage? Is behind the property, is there any way of tying some of that in from that direction?
I don't think people want poles across their backyard. That's, that's again, an approachment on private property and that has a lot of issues. Every time a line goes down, it's now going down in the backyard, you gotta get equipment back there or, you know, tree branches, that's, that's a very difficult operation.
It exists, but it's not, it's never the way to do it.
That's a heavily wooded area, I believe, along that area. I can't imagine trying that.
And, and we're speculating. You have to look at everything that's existent and, and what the extent of-
It has been done. This has been done in this town. No, nobody particularly wants any pole anywhere near their property, but you need to have electricity, you need to have phone, I mean, we all get that, but I, I, I'm just still, I'm very frustrated with what this particular property has had to go through and it's just piling on more, um, and without compensation. It's just outrageous that nobody could see that this has affected this woman's property. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm in the real estate business, it's a problem. And, and just to keep saying, well, we can't, we're sorry, we got this, we got, well, then maybe they should come up with something else that helps her out. It's just, it's outrageous.
And I'll add to it, a couple of years ago, we had a pole situation out on Johnson, uh, no, it was on Johnson Street, it was on San, Johnson Street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we did fix, we did fix that.
Right, we had a pole that was in the middle of this road and in the middle of an intersection on John Street and it took us a while, you were right, you, it took us a while to figure out the optimum solution, but we figured it out.
Figured it out.
And we didn't do it. I mean, we just kept saying, no, no, no.
Go back.
But we, but it was figured out and it was, I have to say, it was probably more difficult than this one because it was sitting in the middle of the street and there wasn't a lot of alternatives, but it was figured out.
And because it was so close to the street, I believe there were several accidents that had happened-
Yeah, there were.
-at that pole through the years, so there's a whole-
That was a part of the problem, right? Cars could be, no. I mean, way out of the box thinking, is there any chance to submerge in the lines, put in lines underground?
You can go under and come up. We've seen that happen.
I mean, it's kinda out of the box, but we're gonna be tearing up Mass Ave?
It's not my infrastructure.
Yeah.
The only, the only thing I can say is, the alternative to what we have is putting the burden on someone to give us a private property easement.
Your question I was just asking, is that not an option to some-
The what?
Is that not an option to put the wires underground?
Underground?
Where we're already digging up everything over there?
That's, yeah, that can happen. It, it's, it's, it's quite extensively, it's expensive.
No, define expensive.
Just to run-
Give me a range.
I don't know, I don't involve with money.
Okay.
That's not my burden.
Fair enough, but I would just think that, again, working with the homeowner in other ways could be a lot cheaper.
Yeah, I mean-
Than what maybe what they should be doing to compensate her for her loss.
I don't know about compensation, I don't know who would be the one to provide that to her, but-
I know it's nobody in this room, but you can take that message back.
I, I don't, I feel for her too. I mean, it's not the best of situations for her, yeah. But the alternative to what we've presented is, is to place a, uh, something either on her property or the neighboring property, an anchor, uh, or across the street. And I'm not sure how that lays out for him. He said something about there being an island there and all that, uh, so that's gonna have to be determined and determined by all three, three of, and including the town. If the town has any wires on those poles going down the street, they'll have to figure out how to do that. You know, it's just, it's a delay, but that, if, if you don't see fit to do it the way we've come forward, we've done what we could in two weeks. And I'm sorry if you got the wrong impression when I, I, I didn't get a chance to call you back earlier today. I did try, I called you around, I think it was four or five by the time I got to you. I was caught up on another, another issue at work, so.
Now's the time to ask it.
I mean, I feel like we've thrown up some, what about that, what about that? And you have some answer to some extent, but it would be helpful for me, I guess, to see more definitively, like, we looked at this option, in this spot, here's exactly why, like, something, I don't know, in writing, something just more-
Concrete.
Concrete, thank you. As to, these are the three options we looked at. This is either why it's not possible, there's not gonna be ADA compliant, or not desirable because there's a delay, or whatever. I mean, not desirable is different than not possible. So I guess I, to the point Chris was trying to get to earlier, the degree of degradation of the solution. So this is the ideal solution. I know you said there is no other viable solution, but I guess I'd like to see the solutions laid out and why they're not viable.
Well, no disrespect to you, but earlier today, we were with the, I was with the engineer, John, I'm not sure, I forget his last name, but I went on Oscar Street and met with him and we went over all the issues on this one and all the alternatives and, and why this particular one was the one I was gonna come tonight and go with the original plan. Yeah.
John here then, to talk, if he's the engineer designing this, why isn't he here?
No, 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 not the engineer from us, uh, your engineer.
Oh, John, oh, he is here. Oh, John, oh, he is here. Sorry, John, I thought it was, he is here.
Two gentlemen I was with today are right here, yeah, from the town.
I thought you were talking about an engineer.
No, no. As far as the engineer from us, I, he, I don't know why he's not here. I can't talk for him.
Well, then my question stands. Why isn't your engineer here to talk to us? I think, yeah, that would be helpful if that person was here and could, you know, defend their decisions a little bit better. And again, no disrespect to you.
Right, I'm kind of like the translator.
No, no, I know, I know.
Yep, the horse of mouth.
We've said we've met you, you've been here many times and you always get the, you always get the brunt of everything. You must have very broad, you have very broad shoulders anyway, so. So what does the board want, also, any further public comment, any further comments on this from anybody? You need to come to the podium, or you can, or the table here, Karen, if you prefer the table, you can sit there as well.
We keep on bringing up not being able to run the telephone. Well, I don't use the telephone lines, I only use wireless. I think a lot of people have wireless homes. They don't have wired phones anymore. That's kind of gone the way of the dinosaurs. So if that is the issue, it's a non-issue, at least for me. I just wanted to make that point.
You know, but I think my personal opinion on that is if, you know, if for some reason you end up selling your home, the next homeowner may want to have it. And if that, if they can't get service...
They can figure it out. I mean, it can be figured out, the phone can be figured out. It's not really hard.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to, do you want to keep it open? And we'll continue this to our next meeting, which is either in two, on February 10th or the one following that, if we think we need additional time from, by N Grid and the state to come back with some of the requests that were made this evening. We can start by moving it to February 10th. And then if we get a request to continue it further sometime between now and then, we can do that. But I would suggest that it sounds like we're moving towards keeping the, keeping the hearing open and continuing it until our next meeting.
That would be my preference.
Yeah, that's mine as well.
Okay, so can I hear a motion?
Till what, February 10th?
Okay, we have a motion to continue the hearing until our next meeting.
Unless they are not ready, then we should move it. With the option, if you're not ready, to tell us you're not ready and then we'll move it to the next one.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. So any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. We will speak about this again. Okay, moving forward, approval of minutes. We have minutes from open session, January 13th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Move that Board of Selectmen approve the open session minutes of January 13th, 2020 as presented.
And a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Consent items, under our new model, we will take all the consent items as one. So we are going to accept a donation from David Stroh in the amount of $75 to the fire department with our thanks. We are going to accept a grant in the amount of $7,117 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Fire Services to the fire department for student and senior fire education. And we will sign the warrant for primary on March 3rd, presidential primary on March 3rd, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of all those items listed A, B, and C as the chair has announced.
Our motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. On your new business, we will table the vote on the National Grid New England Pole Petition. Let's move, we, I believe we're also tabling the vote to adopt this...
Yes, we have to deal with that as well. The auditor will be here for our next meeting through the castra. This was a suggestion of the auditor. And I also have some changes I'd like to make before we move it forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we will table that one as well. And then finally, we'll accept and sign the conservation restriction on the Glenny Woodlot.
Remember at your last meeting, you, or maybe that was two meetings ago, you authorized the purchase and sale agreement of that. The CR was still being worked on at that point. It has been passed by the conservation restriction and is ready for your acceptance signature as well.
Accept that?
That's when we could move that the Board of Selectmen approve and sign the conservation restriction with Essex County Green Belt for the property at Zero Dale Street, commonly known as Glenny Woodlot, as presented and as authorized by the 2019 vote at town meeting. And move that the Board accept Essex County Green Belt Association's $50,000 donation as a contribution to the purchase price of Glenny Woodlot and direct Green Belt to pay the funds to the escrow account as instructed by the closing instructions.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Very exciting, glad to see this move forward. This is something that, you know, was, as stated, it was approved at town meeting last year and we're moving forward with it now and it's good, all good news. We always like when we can extend our green footprint and maintain it and make sure we have it for generations to come, so.
It's kind of interesting because it's sort of melding two nostalgic feelings about Glenny's. You've got where the ice cream place was off of Mass Ave. Now with the lots, kind of a fun thing for both people who live a little further out country and people who live downtown who remember it and remember it fondly. Glenny's was our milkman.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Chair, people, there is representative here who was just asking if she would sign so she could head on out, so.
Would they prefer a rate of approval right here to send more to one place or is it just...
It's just one place. Maybe just one place, I don't know.
Okay, next on the agenda, we will move into licensing. Do I have a motion?
Move to open a meeting of the North End of our Licensing Commission.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Okay, the first thing we have is a renewal of entertainment license for the Stephen Coolidge Place. As I mentioned in our last meeting, the Stephen's Coolidge Place was not properly notified that we had only renewed the license for 30 days with our request that they work with the neighbors to, I guess, figure out a plan to appease some of the concerns that the neighbors had with this license. So because they were not notified, we notified them obviously sometime in early January and I'm suggesting that we extend this license for another 30 days to give them the opportunity to meet with the neighbors and come up with a plan to address their concerns. So we would revisit this in March.
Madam Chair, if I may, I do know that Catherine McDonald has reached out to the neighbors to set up meetings. I've CC'd on those emails. And I met with her as well to go over some other restrictions that we have in entertainment licenses and to brainstorm restrictions for this one. And it was a very fruitful conversation.
So I don't know if anyone has any questions, this is just one, an additional one month.
Madam Chair, I move the Board of Selectmen acting as Licensing Commissioners renew the entertainment license for the Stephen's Coolidge Place through March 2nd, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, and next we have a request of Bertucci's Restaurants LLC, DBA Bertucci's at 435 Andover Street for a change of manager. I don't see anyone here from Bertucci's, I don't think. So everything was in order in our packet. Looks rather routine. So.
Move that the Board of Selectmen acting as Licensing Commissioners approve the request of Bertucci's Restaurant LLC, DBA Bertucci's at 435 Andover Street for a change of manager as presented.
Okay, motion made in a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And that's all we have.
Should we move out of licensing?
All in favor? Aye.
Okay, back, we have no old business. Town manager's report.
So, no major updates on the job posting slash vacancy log except that the assessor's position has been posted and you should look for that if you're interested in that position. We're encouraging people to apply. I am holding office hours on the 4th in this room at 5 o'clock and I will have Trudy Reed with me, the new town clerk. So if people want to come and meet her, it's always a fun conversation. Stan's usually a regular there as well, which I appreciate. But it's a good chance to get to know Trudy as we're moving into election and town meeting time, which is exciting. We're actively working on the budget right now, so that's most of our time. I have been happy to be able to work with the schools and figure out a way to meet their needs for this fiscal year and we're going to continue to have those conversations as we move forward. But right now, we're having internal budget hearings with our department heads and working on having a budget ready for you on the 10th, so.
I just want to thank you for your very diligent working with the school committee and superintendent to come up with some creative ways to accommodate their requests.
Thank you.
We'll call correctly. You also gave some kudos to Lynn Savage for assisting you of putting it together. And I think it's great, you did it very timely. I know some people are a little impatient, but it all worked out well.
I don't think Lynn has slept much in the last couple of weeks. So hopefully she has a well-deserved vacation coming up after this.
Last couple months.
Sure.
Yes, exactly.
Next week, week after maybe? Spend about a year, she has.
That's right.
She's been doing a great job, we're very happy to have her.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Now, Selectmen's updates, comments, we'll start to my left.
So I had a question, we've kind of talked about this a little bit, and I know I've spoken about it with Jim, the plan for the sidewalks on Route 125 by where, where 125 and 133 kind of merge and then split apart before Great Pond Road, the sidewalks over there. Some residents had expressed concern that they weren't, they weren't being plowed, but of course, there's, they're kind of in a gray area. And so I wanted to understand what, if anything, we can do to make it easier for pedestrians over there.
I don't know if you want to ask it up now or if you typically would have that be like a future agenda item?
Yeah, I think...
Put his mind around it.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, why don't we take that as an item and ask for a response?
Okay.
Instead of putting Ms. Stanton on the spot.
You did spur something that I heard on the news or read about that the city of Salon has adopted this tree program similar to what we have discussed, that they would provide and plant trees on private property. They would take care of it initially and then from going forward, it would then be the property owner's responsibility. But really exciting and they're, boy, they're planting a ton of trees. So, I don't know. Again, you don't have to comment, that's not fair to just spring it on you, but maybe it's something we could find out where they got all the money for all those trees, which would be great.
The tree program and sidewalks on Route 125. Got it, okay.
All right, I have nothing tonight?
What do you think tonight?
All good?
Okay, our next meeting is February 10th, 2020. And this is probably a new record, I think we are...
This is so good, not even an hour because you were...
A one-hour meeting, yeah, not even an hour because I started a few minutes late.
A few minutes late, yeah.
So I'll have, here a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. I think we should hang around, we need to sign the warrant.